A 15 meeting to order, if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the September 28, 2015 regular meeting as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and we have a meeting two weeks from yesterday, I believe, and there are several items on the agenda. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a meeting scheduled for October 20th, Tuesday, at 5:30 to discuss House Bill 5.
Thank you. Streets and Sabox Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, nothing scheduled.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't have a meeting scheduled at this time, but I am going to try to get one in by the end of October or early November. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. We have 15-154 budget amendments, 15-155 establish new fund for the municipal court special projects, 15-156 increasing 2016 membership fees or rates at the Medina County Recreation Center, 15-157 increase PO number 2,015,400 Pratt Co. Police Department, 15-158 authorize Internet auction, 1997 Pierce fire truck, 15-159 purchase of one Ford F-450 chassis for fire department, 15-160 accept amounts and rates for budget commission, 15-161 TLT Babcock Job Creation Grant, 15-162 2016 Main Street Medina Membership, 15-163 termination of grant agreement, 15-164 installation of storm water inlet basin at 711 West Smith, 15-165 qualification based selection process for the Guilford Boulevard Bridge replacement, 15-166 discussion update for the Spring Road Cemetery project cost. And we have one item for the Public Properties Committee, which is 15-167 discussion of partner marketing for sponsorship contract for the MCRC. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, President Coin. The Healthy Strides Walks will continue at the various county parks. This is where different health professionals talk to the group there and then they take a walk on the second and fourth Saturday of each month. It started in April and will conclude October 24th. Good exercise, good information, a good way to see the many county parks and the amenities that they have to offer. The walks and talks are both done in about an hour. It starts at 9:00 a.m. It's generally done by 10:00 a.m. The park locations they'll be at are on the Healthy Medina website, which is www.healthymedina.com or the Medina County Parks website, which is www.medinacountyparks.com. The council may have seen in the media, but just in case, the Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services were able to find an office location on East Washington out near our cemetery. The exchange with the business community, the city and the county is a positive example of cooperation and collaboration between the city, the county, La Cotta staff and the business owners in our city. A number of locations were visited and toured and they ended up with a lease agreement for the office space on East Washington Street. I'd like to thank all involved for bringing this matter to a positive resolution and provide the necessary services that our Medina County residents are desiring locally. Excuse me. Today I received a note from Ohio Secretary of State John Husted requesting that we provide on the city website a link to the Secretary of State's website and what it provides is information on each of the statewide issues. It includes the official ballot language, the explanation, arguments for and against the initiatives and the full text of the issues. The link will be on the city website to click on or you can go to the www.ohiosecretaryofstate.gov and then if you, at the bottom of the front page, if you go to know the statewide issues at the bottom of the page, it'll do the same thing for you. Couple upcoming events, the annual Veterans Day concert with our community band will be performing at St. Francis Church on Wednesday, November 11th at 7:00 p.m. This is the actual Veterans Day holiday. The Planning Committee worked with me to try to keep it from a Monday evening, so I didn't have to miss council for it, which would be in conflict with our council meeting. All are welcome. It's a great concert and it usually lasts about an hour. And then on Friday, November 20th through Sunday, November 22nd is the kickoff of the Candlelight Walk Downtown, the Community Tree Lighting is Friday, November 20th at 7:00 p.m. The Holiday of Lights Parade is from, the parade is from Medina High School to the square and it starts at about 5:30 Saturday evening, the 21st. Then following the parade conclusion and then clearing of the safe area, fireworks will be set off along with Christmas music synchronized to Christmas music. There are a variety of other events will take part or take place Friday, Saturday and Sunday and if you're interested in that, you can go to the Main Street Medina website for the schedule, specific activities and sponsors and that's www-mainstreetmedina.com. And then last but not least, I'd like to invite Councilman Colasar up front as well as Jason Reinhardt, Mike Colonna, Dustin Klaus and Ray Pietro for a presentation. So these four men and the Cleveland Area Mountain Bike Association and the volunteers have done a great deal of work in the City of Medina on our bike trails and Councilman Colasar asked if we could recognize each of them with a City of Medina proclamation and we have an individual one for each of these men and it reads, "City of Medina proclamation, whereas the Cleveland Area Mountain Bike Association and its local volunteers, Jason Reinhardt, Mike Colonna, Dustin Klaus and Ray Pietro have come together to collaborate and establish a framework for mutually beneficial creation, preservation and enhancement of mountain biking bicycling experiences and whereas the City of Medina manages parkland for a variety of uses and activities including outdoor recreation and encourages responsible use of our public lands by mountain bicyclists and the broader recreation community and whereas the City of Medina is interested in providing a variety of mountain bicycling opportunities at Reagan Park and Huffman Cunningham Park that are environmentally sensitive and educational that support the local and regional economies, promote healthy lifestyles and enhance the quality of life. Whereas the vast majority of our mountain bicycling trails have been constructed by volunteers who have donated thousands of hours of labor and provided materials in the creation and development of our extensive trail system. Now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize and commend the Cleveland Area Mountain Bike Association and its members for their commitment, dedication and hard work on developing, maintaining and improving the mountain bicycling trails at Reagan Park and Huffman Cunningham Park." Do you all like to speak?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mark Colasar, the City of Medina and our Parks Department for allowing us access to Reagan Park and helping us build one of the best trails in northeast Ohio. Dustin Klaus from the very beginning has been involved as well as Mike Colonna and this summer, we've been lucky enough to have Ray Pietro from Ray's Indoor Mountain Bike Park, founder of the world's first indoor mountain bike park, come down and lend his tireless work ethic and construction skills to help us take this trail to the next level. So we're looking forward to many years of future enjoyment and more commitment or better trail. So, thanks.
Gentlemen, on behalf of city council as well, I know all the time and effort you've put into these trails, though I haven't been on them in a while, I know they're spectacular the last time I've been on them. I just want to say thank you. You've put the City of Medina on the map. I know there's bikers that come in from all over the state to use the trail probably out of state as well and thank you for all your effort and all that volunteer time that you've put in and appreciate you committed to the City of Medina. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we had a budget hearing this evening before this meeting. We have another tomorrow and we're getting close to wrapping up our 16 to 20 budgets.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Bear Ducci, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report. Just a note for council and the public, another reminder that our Made in Medina County Manufacturing Expo will be held on Friday, November 6th at the Medina County Fairgrounds in the Community Center. We are expecting over 500 guests and visitors from throughout northeast Ohio to attend the expo, meet with nearly 60 exhibiting manufacturing companies and hear a keynote presentation from Thomas Frey, Google's top-ranked futurist speaker. Students from every Medina County school district will be in attendance to meet with the manufacturers, learn about career paths, participate in hands-on demonstrations in 3D printing and visit a mobile welding lab. For exhibitors and sponsors, there will also be the opportunity to attend an Alice Active Shooter Training Session after the expo closes to the general public. If you would like to see the keynote presentation by Thomas Frey, tickets can be purchased online by visiting our website at www.maidinmedinacounty.com. The cost of a ticket is $40 and includes breakfast. We have had a tremendous amount of support from our business community and our other community partners and I would like to take a moment to thank the following sponsors. Westfield Insurance and Westfield Bank for sponsoring our keynote speaker, the AI Root Company, Americal Corporation, Antonio's Pizza, Automation Tool &amp; Die, Beacon Marshall, Bullseye Activewear, Cascade Capital Corporation, the City of Medina, City of Wadsworth, City of Brunswick, the Cleveland Clinic in Brunswick, Community Energy Advisors, Kyle Hoga Community College, Fast Signs of Medina, Fire Decks, Frontier Communications, Gersbacher Real Estate Group, Greater Akron Chamber, the Greater Cleveland Partnership, Integrity Staffing Services, Main Street Lighting, the Medina County Fiber Network, Medina Plating Corporation, Owens Corning Corporation, PNC Bank, Proximity Marketing, Sandridge Food Corporation, Temper Sealy, Shiloh Industries, the HR Group, Wickert Insurance, WireNet, Ohio Means Jobs, the Medina County Career Center, Hawthorne Suites by Wyndham, Magnet, Medina County Fair Board, the Alice Training Institute and last but not least, Retsal and Andress. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mandell, Planning and Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I do have a short report. I just wanted to talk about the Boards and Commissions meeting from October 8th last Thursday. One of the items on there was the site plan review by the Planning Commission for the improvements and modernization of the facility for the Medina County Veterans Memorial Hall at 620 North Broadway. Just wanted to, you know, they had been running a capital campaign to improve their facility for the current and future generations of veterans that are in Medina County to better serve, better serve that clientele. That was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission, so that'll be going through in a great effort by the Memorial Hall management to bring those funds together to improve that facility for our community. Additionally, we have a special Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission meeting next Tuesday, October 20th, to, for improvements at Birch Hill Apartments on Minor Drive to allow for review of improvements that they're doing to their facility and I'm just highlighting these two projects in particular just to, as individual examples of, you know, a lot of great positive reinvestment that's being put back into the community that really shows a validation of, you know, all of us in the community and our efforts to make Medina a place to be and to invest dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Saturday, we had our annual open house at the fire station. The weather gods cooperated. We had a great turnout and I'd just like to thank all the residents who came out, spent time with us and all local businesses that helped support our function. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to the community that the Medina Rec is having a senior day at the rec on Friday, October 23rd from 9:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The event is sponsored by the Medina Rec, Medina Hospital, Cleveland Clinic and the Medina County Office of Older Adults. Will include a guest lecture, guest lecture by Miles Reed, health screenings, vendors, raffles and refreshments. The Medina Rec's youth basketball leagues are starting soon. The registration and skills testing for second through fifth grade are Wednesday, November 4th and Thursday, November 5th, while the sixth through 12th grade is Wednesday, November 11th and Thursday, November 12th. Kindergarten and first grade can register anytime and then for times and rates, please go to our website at www.madinarec.org or for any other questions you may have, please contact Maureen Dowell at 330-721-6935. Lastly, our next scheduled rec advisory committee meeting is this Thursday at 7:30 a.m. at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an update for council on the Building Department. For the first nine months of the year, January 1st to September 30th, the Building Department issued 1,062 building permits. These permits cover construction values of close to $11.5 million. This is excellent news especially due to the fact that the city is pretty much built out. It shows that both the commercial and, that the residential and commercial property owners know the value of living in or operating a business within the City of Medina. They are reinvesting into the community. The permits issued generated close to 151,000 in permit fees. These fees help cover, cover part of the day-to-day operating cost of the Building Department. This ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. Updated a couple active projects, our street repair program. We've got about two more weeks to go than they should be completed. Also, we met with Columbia Gas this morning, the project they're doing on the area just northwestern, west downtown here, they expect their project to be done within the next week or two, which is good news. We have two projects out to bid, our ADA curb ramp project, which will install 25 curb ramps at various locations around the city and later on this week, we'll begin our bidding for the North Huntington Street Phase II reconstruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our leaf program, tenderness, was scheduled for this week and as most everyone knows, the leaves aren't falling as we anticipated, so we're kind of in a waiting period. However, as leaves fall, people rake to the curb, we will be out. This year, we're approaching a little bit different as I reported in other meetings. We'd like to split the city north and south with Smith Road as the divider line. There'll be a map updated daily to be color-coded with each pass that's completed. Residents can call in on the leaf hotline, 330-725-5323, as well as the website, www.medinoh.org for updates. The last item I have is the city auction is slated for Saturday, November 14th of this year at the City Garage. That address is 781 West Smith Road. We anticipate a decent crowd. We have over 220 items, as you see on the list, for approval. Some good, some not-so-good items. There's five police cruisers. Big-ticket items are garbage trucks, two, excuse me, two garbage trucks and also a leaf fact that we had since 1991. Preview is at 9 o'clock a.m. and the auction promptly starts at 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments, we have two of them. Ron Peyto for the Economic Development Committee expiring 12/31/18 and also Ron Peyto for the Business Development Committee expiring 12/31/19.
Move to approve the two confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Discussion on the mayor's appointments. Will the clerk please call the roll on the mayor's appointments.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Orders 119-15 passes seven zero.
Orders 120-15, Orders Res zoning parcel number 028-19A-21376 located at 139 West Liberty Street from C2 Central Business to PF Public Facilities.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mandell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This also, as you said, is a rezoning for 139 West Liberty. To be explicit, that's the former Masonic Temple building immediately to, next door here to City Hall. The city did purchase this property in 2014 to make it part, to be planned as part of incorporated into the city-owned contiguous land holdings, which are right here and also for the purpose of being portion, portion of the property being used for the new municipal courthouse project. The property is zoned, is currently is about 31,000 square feet. It's currently zoned C2 Central Business District. Since the existing city-owned property to the north and south, which is City Hall and the Liberty Parking Lot are publicly owned and, and, and public uses, there's own PF Public Facilities. The subject property to be rezoned is currently under city ownership and planned for a public use, therefore it needs to be, it needs to be zoned, rezoned from C2 to PF. This was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on July 9th of 2015 and also went to public hearing in front of the city council on September 25th, 28th, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Orders 120-15 passes seven zero.
Resolution 121-15, a resolution accepting a donation of one 2015 Trek Remedy 7 mountain bike and two Jiro or Gyro helmets to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is to accept the donation of a mountain bike and two helmets for the Parks Department. We plan to use this mountain bike to perform trail inspections to ensure the safety of all the users on our over 11 and a half miles of mountain bike trails at Huffman Cunningham and Reagan Park. I'd like to thank Trek Bicycle Corporation, The Edge Outdoors, the four gentlemen we introduced earlier, Ray Pietro, Jason Reinhardt, Mike Colonna and Dustin Klaus for their donation and I also commend them for their commitment to our trail system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on a resolution.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 121-15 passes seven zero.
Orders 122-15, Orders authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award to contracted a successful bidder for the purchase of one 2015 front loader compactor truck, complete with cab and chassis for the sanitation department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Currently, we have four front-load trucks in our fleet in sanitation. This will replace one as we are retiring one. Our last purchase for a front loader was in 2007.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Orders 122-15 passes seven zero.
Orders 123-15, Orders authorizing the mayor to execute preliminary legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the US 42 corridor improvement project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As most of you know, for many years, we've been working with ODOT and trying to develop our corridor improvement project on Route 42. This is a project that'll extend from Highland and Harding Street, just south of Highland and Harding Street and of course, treat all the way to Fen Road. This project's getting closer. ODOT anticipates bidding it next year. This legislation represents our commitment financially to the project, though no funds are needed at this point. Our payment will be due closer to the bid date. This is our promise that we're in for a little over $2 million is our share of the project costs.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? I'd just like to add that this has been a project and it worked for many years and I believe city council and administration together worked collaboratively. I think we all agreed upon some center islands being added down Route 42 from Walgreens, I guess, to the, what would that be, to the west? And I think that that's going to be an added benefit to the city once we decide on the landscaping and the lighting and all that involved in it. I think that that would bring an aesthetic piece to that corridor that doesn't currently exist and I appreciate all the work to that. Yes, Mr. Patton.
I did want to add, our share is a little over $2 million, but the entire project cost is about $35 million, so $2 million's a lot, but the project's a lot more expensive than that.
And I believe it's going to add to the better traffic management and congestion in that area and traffic flow, which will aid in anybody shopping down by, by those stores. Any other comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 121-15 passes seven zero.
Orders 122-15, Orders authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award to contracted a successful bidder for the purchase of one 2015 front loader compactor truck, complete with cab and chassis for the sanitation department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Currently, we have four front-load trucks in our fleet in sanitation. This will replace one as we are retiring one. Our last purchase for a front loader was in 2007.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Orders 122-15 passes seven zero.
Orders 123-15, Orders authorizing the mayor to execute preliminary legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the US 42 corridor improvement project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As most of you know, for many years, we've been working with ODOT and trying to develop[1672.63] our corridor improvement project on Route 42. This is a project that will extend from Highland and Harding Street, just south of Highland and Harding Street, on North Court Street, all the way to Fenn Road. This project's getting closer. ODOT anticipates bidding it next year. This legislation represents our commitment financially to the project, though no funds are needed at this point. Our payment will be due closer to the bid date. This is our promise that we're in for a little over $2 million is our share of the project costs.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? I'd just like to add that this has been a project that has worked for many years, and I believe city council and administration together worked collaboratively. I think we all agreed upon some center islands being added down Route 42 from Walgreens, I guess, to the, what would that be, to the west? And I think that that's going to be an added benefit to the city, once we decide on the landscaping and the lighting and all that involved in it. I think that that would bring an added aesthetic piece to that corridor that doesn't currently exist, and I appreciate all the work to that. Yes, Mr. Patton?
I did want to add, our share is a little over $2 million, but the entire project cost is about $35 million, so $2 million's a lot, but the project's a lot more expensive than that.
And I believe it's going to add to the better traffic management and congestion in that area, and traffic flow, which will aid in anybody shopping down by those stores. Any other comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the role in the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordnance 123-15 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 124-15, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a requirement that we have to do every year. We have to certify these rates. The emergency clause is requested because we did not receive this in time to put it on a September meeting, and we have to return it to the county budget commission by October 30th.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role in the emergency clause.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the role in the resolution.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordnance 124-15 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 125-15, an ordinance amending ordinance number 200-14, passed December 8th, 2014, amendments to the 2015 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President.